Good afternoon. The regular meeting of the Southern Shores Town Council from May 7th, 2019 is now in session. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands on a nation under one, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
I would ask you to remember the families and friends of those students who were killed recently in the shooting at UNC Charlotte. Another tragedy. Please join me in a moment of silence. Counsel, you have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Have a second, Jim?
Yes.
Any discussion, counsel? All in favor of accepting the agenda as presented, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. You have an agenda? You have a motion to approve the consent agenda, counsel, tab one.
So moved.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Said agenda's been approved. This time I'll call on our town planner, planning director, and deputy town manager, Mr. Wes Haskett. Good evening, Wes.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you, and good evening, members of council. I have a report for y'all tonight for the month of May. There were ten, excuse me, April, ten zoning permits issued, forty-nine building permits issued, four single-family dwellings, five additions, two remodels, three addition remodels, six repairs, three accessories, and twenty-six others. There are currently nineteen single-family dwellings under construction in the town, and the total amount of fees collected was thirteen thousand eight seventy-six twelve. With respect to the ongoing work on non-conforming lots, I wanted to give y'all a little update on that as well. As directed by council at the February 5th Town Council meeting, town staff researched the number of non-conforming lots in the town and presented our findings to the Planning Board on April 23rd. What we found is that there are a total of three thousand and thirty-seven lots, total lots, in the town, with eight hundred and six, eight hundred and forty-six of those, which is about twenty-eight percent, that are less than twenty thousand square feet. There are also two hundred and forty-one parcels, or about eight percent, that consist of two or more lots. As a result, the Planning Board requested that town staff draft a new zoning text amendment that includes all of the non-conforming situations that were included in their recommendation in ZTA-1809 PB with the inclusion of two additional situations. This ZTA will be considered by the Board at their June 17th meeting. So that's where we stand with that. With respect to the May 20th Planning Board meeting, the Board will consider CUP 1901, this is the request that was delayed at the applicant's request from American Tower Verizon Wireless to extend the tower at 148A Ocean Boulevard of the SCA property. So that's going to go before the Board on May 20th. They'll have to make a recommendation, then it'll ultimately come back to y'all for a public hearing. Any questions?
Any questions, counsel?
Is that a report online anywhere that we can get that information on how many lots?
The, not, there's not necessarily a report. We posted the spreadsheets that showed all the data on the lists. There are two different spreadsheets and a map that goes with each one. They're on the website.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Wes.
Yes, sir.
David Cole, our police chief. Good afternoon, David.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. The April 2019 monthly report, officers handled fourteen hundred and seven calls for service for the month of April. Under the incidents, as you can see up there, those are the actual crimes that were reported. We had a total of sixteen. Two of those were larceny. We had one vandalism. Six that were drug-related. We had two driving while intoxicated, an alcohol law enforcement violation, one fraud, one found property, and an OCA. We also had, that's a warrant, OCA. We also had a mental health issue commitment for a total of sixteen. Under the criminal arrest, we had one arrest for the drugs, two for the driving while intoxicated, for a total of three. We had zero accidents for the month of April, which is quite a shock. As far as citations, the officers conducted a hundred and seventeen stops for the month of April. Out of that, they wrote twenty-eight citations and another eighty warning citations. As far as the ordinance violations, which mostly consisted of parking ordinances, there was a total of eighteen. Any questions?
Any questions from the chief, counsel?
When does the speed limit change on 12th?
I believe that's Memorial Weekend, a couple of weekends before.
Close to Memorial Day, but it's whenever DOT actually gets to it. Sometimes it's a week before, a week after the projected dates. Last year, they gave us May 15th, and it didn't change until right before Memorial Day.
Right.
Do we have that on the website, Peter?
If I get a date, certain, we'll certainly put it on there.
Our officers will be out there letting them know that, too, so, one way or the other.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. This time I'd like to call on Deputy Chief Jay Williams of the Fire Department, and I think Jay's going to make a presentation to us, and then we'll hear from the contractor working on our, on our new fire station.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. Adam Hughes with AR Chestam is here this evening, so after I give the report, he'll give you an update on the progress of the building.
That's great, thank you.
All right. So as you can see, the month of April was busy for the Fire Department. We had four fire-related incidents, thirty-three medical-type calls. We had one electrical equipment malfunction. We had two service calls, one governmental assist, two public services, one smoke detector activation due to malfunction, one detector activation, no fire, unintentional, and two alarm system activations with no fire. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chestam?
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Just an update on the fire station construction. We've had fought through a small delay with regards to design of a pre-engineered metal building component of the fire station. We've worked through that over the past sixty days, and we are now in the short road of that design, to the point where revised design has been submitted to the architect and engineer, been approved with some comments. We have about six questions that are outstanding now for the metal building manufacturer to answer, back to the architect. I anticipate having those answers in hand sometime within the next twenty-four hours. As soon as those answers are received, we'll have the all-clear to proceed, and should see work resume by the end of this week in partial force and in full force by the end of next week, with no more delays anticipated. If you have any questions about delays or future work, I'll be happy to answer. Yes, sir.
If all things went according to plan, which rarely they do, do you have a projected timeline just about how long it would take to construct the building?
Yes, sir. So our initial schedule was for twelve months.
Okay.
Our current schedule on paper is showing that we're approximately sixty days behind schedule. Once we receive approval on our building and we're able to get it released for production, we'll be able to update that schedule because we'll have a, we'll have a firm guaranteed delivery date in hand from the building manufacturer. At that time, we'll update that schedule. I think the likelihood of being finished twelve months from the day we started at this point is, is pretty slim, but we're going to do our best to minimize that delay. And realistically, right now, we're thinking we're about thirty days behind that initial completion date that we had projected.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate you telling us this. I've been driving by the site quite often, and I wondered about what the, what the, what the delay was. It didn't, it didn't jive with your schedule or the completion date.
Right, and it's driving us crazy. We, we hate to see it sitting there idle, sending labor here and having overhead in the office just racking up expenses for AR Chestam and nothing happening on-site. So we're, we're anxious, the subcontractors are anxious, the suppliers are anxious, they've locked in pricing, they're, they're needing to get product off the shelves, so we're ready to get back to work.
I personally appreciate your update this evening. I'm sure, I'm sure all of us do. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Peter, I understand as part of your report this evening, you will be advising us as to your proposed budget for fiscal year 1920, and then it has been filed. I want to remind council, any discussion as to details, modifications, changes, or adoption must wait until after the public hearing in June, June 4th meeting. Peter?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Did want to advise the council that lifeguards are on scene right now, they are here. They will begin their actual roving around May the 15th, but they're actually taking calls now. If we have any calls, as usual, as the practice, three stands will go up by, on Memorial Day weekend, and the fourth stand at the Triangle Park will, will go up when the public schools get out in mid-June. Also wanted to remind the council that you still, you do get your monthly financial reports every month from the finance officer, and of course, they include the ongoing budget performance in, for the year. So they should, they are going out by-bony each time, and they have a revenue and expense report in there that shows your budget performance for the current year. As far as the proposed budget, did, this afternoon, the budget officer, my proposed operating budget for the upcoming fiscal year 2019, 2020, was filed with the town clerk as required by state law, and it was immediately emailed to each of you. It'll be posted on the town website and be available for public inspection tomorrow morning. The proposed budget contains the same line items and justification sheets reviewed by you as a council at your April 23rd budget planning session, with the change indicated to you that day in solid waste tipping fees, and it also includes the addition of the two goals that council enacted that day. The budget officer's budget message was also submitted to you as required by state law. A public hearing on the proposed budget has been set for your June 4th meeting, and as you know, the council can make its own changes to the budget officer's proposed budget after that public hearing and adopt it as proposed or make your changes. The budget message that was filed with the proposed budget, I will read that into the record for you and for the citizens in attendance here tonight. To the mayor and members of the town council, dated today, I'm pleased to report to you today the submittal and filing of the budget officer's proposed balanced budget proposing no property tax increase in the town's current property tax rate of twenty-two cents per one hundred dollars of taxable property value. The town of Southern Shores continues to provide the most services with the smallest workforce at the lowest tax rate of any local government in Dare County. This year's proposed budget is balanced by projecting seven million four hundred and fifty thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars in revenues to fund the same amount in projected expenses to maintain the same level of services to citizens of the town. This balanced budget proposes to fund the town's longstanding public services as well as the goals the council has previously directed for implementation during the upcoming fiscal year. A revenue of one million three hundred and twenty-five thousand six hundred and fourteen dollars is proposed as a transfer from the town's undesignated fund balance, which as of June 30th, 2018, had an audited balance of four million seven hundred and fifty-two thousand one hundred and eighty-seven dollars, an amount more than the town's adopted minimum balance policy by three million five hundred and seventy-seven thousand one hundred and eighty-seven dollars, and more than the town manager's personal recommended minimum to ensure enough funds for natural disaster recovery by an amount of one million seven hundred and fifty-two thousand one hundred and eighty-seven dollars. The proposed transfer is projected to cover the major expense of council-directed budget expenses for the cost of a walking path along South Dogwood Trail, funds for town-owned building updates to meet current building code minimums, and funds to cover ongoing increased legal costs due to increased town land use permit challenges. In accordance with the town, with, excuse me, in accordance with the State of North Carolina's Local Government Budget and Fiscal Control Act, the proposed town of Southern Shores operating budget for upcoming fiscal year 2019, 2020, was filed today with the town clerk and will be available for public inspection beginning May the 8th, 2019. Public notice of the proposed operating budget will be posted on the town's bulletin boards, the town's website, the town's social media outlets, and in a notice of public hearing to be published in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 159 TACT 12, for a public hearing to be held June 4th, 2019, at 5:30 PM in the Town Hall Complex's pit center. During the months of January and February of this calendar year, and in accordance with the Local Government Budget and Fiscal Control Act, the town's budget officer gathered from the department heads the estimated cost of continuing to provide our taxpayers the same basic services for the next fiscal year. Projected costs have been adjusted to indicate increases or decreases as appropriate. There are expenses for services which cannot be adjusted due to contractual obligations, such as fire protection, lifeguard services, and solid waste collection. The town council's February 26, 2019 annual planning session meeting offered any member of the town council to move the council by its action to direct major projects to be included in the proposed budget filed today. The April 23 budget planning session meeting again offered an opportunity to any member of the town council to move the council by its action to include any major projects or planning directives, or direct any changes in town policies, programs, or services resulting in a change to the budget officer's proposed budget. A video replay of the town council's February 26, 2019 annual planning session meeting has been available for public review, and that's two segments on the town's website. A video of the town council's April 23, 2019 budget planning session meeting has been available on the town's website for public, for the public to review, and that is two segments as well. After the June 4th, 2019 public hearing on the budget officer's filed proposed budget, the town council may further deliberate at its discretion on the components of the proposed budget and either adopt the proposed budget by simple majority vote, or amend the budget officer's proposed budget by simple majority vote and adopt it as amended. The overall fiscal goal of the town's administration continues to be the best possible delivery of all towns' public municipal service, services in an economically feasible manner. By successfully accomplishing this goal each year, end-of-year budget savings and any realized unanticipated revenues automatically transfer into the town's undesignated fund balance. Just to highlight the proposed budget highlights for this coming fiscal year, the budget officer proposed expenses, four highlights. The Aptum Coastal Engineer for continued annual beach surveys and report of a profile study for our beach, beaches for this current calendar year and for next calendar year, the contract cost is forty-five thousand dollars. A classification and pay study, which is recommended every five to eight years, which was last done in 2013, the contract cost is five thousand one hundred dollars. Fire Department for the council-directed annual debt service of a new fire station and also inclusion of a side fence as directed by the council, the total cost for the year would be three hundred and twenty-four thousand twenty dollars. And increased legal costs to the town for the next fiscal year are projected to be cost of a hundred thousand dollars. The further, further council-directed expenses which are included in this year's proposed balanced budget are the construction of a South Dogwood Trail walking trail directed by a council vote of three to two on April 23, 2019. The engineer's cost estimate for that entire length is one million dollars, and that's inclusive of the installation of select side-street crosswalks at Woodland and Hickory for the East Dogwood Trail walking trail. Also included as a council-directed expense is the funding to update town-owned buildings to achieve building, minimum building code standards, which was directed by the council on April 23, 2019 by a vote of five to nothing unanimously, and that is a projected cost by the architects of two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. For Capitol Street improvements since 2015, by practice, the town council holds a separate public hearing after budget adoption for proposed adoption of a prioritization of Capitol Street improvements for the upcoming fiscal year based on a recommendation from the council's Capitol Infrastructure Improvement Planning Committee. This additional procedure adds yet another layer of opportunity for public input, for attention to needed infrastructure improvements. The funding is derived from the previously adopted budget. The public hearing for fiscal year 1920 Capitol Improvement Plan will be held July 9th, 2019, and I anticipate a recommendation from your CIP committee to reach you at your June meeting. And that is the budget message for the filed budget, proposed budget. Will say that the ad valorem tax portion of revenues this year are based on a town-assessed value of one billion three hundred and twenty-nine million two hundred and eighty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars. That formulated with the twenty-two cents of current ad valorem tax rate gives the town a revenue of two million nine hundred and twenty-four thousand five hundred and thirty-nine dollars, which makes up forty-one percent of your budget, of the proposed budget for this year. So that is the ad valorem tax portion. The tax, the proposed budget maintains a tax rate currently of twenty-two cents, and one penny of that tax rate generates revenue of a hundred and thirty-two thousand four hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Again, the proposed budget will be online first thing in the morning, and is available for public inspection. It contains all the line items that you went over as a, as a council at your budget planning session, and all those same line items, of course, are in the, in the filing and on the website and available for the public to inspect and, of course, comment on at any time, especially at the public hearing. And that's my manager's report.
Thank you, Peter. Any questions, counsel? If not, we'll move ahead. Town attorney's report?
I don't have anything to report this evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ben. General public comment? Thank you, David. Good evening, Tricia.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to thank you for supporting the historic flat-top tour. We had a lovely tour on the afternoon of April 27th. It was very successful, open house with fourteen homes on the tour. We sold over four hundred tickets and may raise near twenty-eight hundred dollars for the Outer Banks Community Foundation. So it was a wonderful afternoon, and I would thank, like to thank Mr. Connors for coming by my house and hopefully, and to let you know that there was a coyote sighting in my backyard on Sunday. The fox came by, and about an hour later, the coyote came by the other way, and an hour later, the fox went back by the other way. So there were no fights in the yard, so I was happy for that, and I was told that it looked like a small German shepherd. So all I got today was a black snake when I got here, so, thank you.
Thank you, Tricia. Ann Scherdsma. Afternoon, Ann.
Good afternoon, everyone. Ann Scherdsma, 69 Hickory Trail. I would like to urge all five of you to support ZTA 1901 PB. I'd like to see unanimous decision by the, this council in support of a unanimous recommendation by the Planning Board, which spent months working on this, listening, studying, deliberating, considering all the possibilities. And if you do not approve, I would appreciate hearing from you individually as to why you object to the ZTA. On that point, I believe there's a fallacy operating that goes along the lines of septic capacity or occupancy limits is just another substitute for the number of bedrooms. I would say that that's incorrect. I can tell you from personal experience, I have co-ownership of an oceanfront cottage that has four bedrooms, the septic capacity is six. I also went through the bulletin of the Southern Shores Realty Rental Program and found numerous exceptions to the two-bedrooms time, two people per bedroom equals the septic capacity or the occupancy. For example, a house on 11th Avenue, five bedrooms, capacity twelve. Two in Pelican Watch, three bedrooms, capacity seven. Four bedrooms, capacity seven. A house at 159 Ocean Boulevard, six bedrooms, capacity eighteen. A house at 163 Ocean Boulevard, seven bedrooms, capacity twenty-one. And so it goes. Five bedrooms at 105 Ocean Boulevard, capacity twelve. According to Patrina Chappell, who's the rental manager at Southern Shores Realty, occupancy is based on the septic capacity, and as you can see, the septic capacity is not based on the number of bedrooms. So I would encourage you to dissuade yourselves of that notion. On another point, I would like to encourage you to spare the Yopon tree, the Yopon Trail tree. I've driven the road several times now since the intersection was reconfigured, and I do not believe that it's very significant obstruction to turning south on South Dogwood Trail. In addition, I believe there are easy fixes. Instead of destroying a healthy tree, which has been an iconic symbol in the neighborhood for decades, you could solve the problem there that residents feel they have by putting up a mirror, just like you did at Tall Pine Bridge. After that, the lines of sight were affected there. When you come out on Tall Pine Lane and go south on Dogwood Trail, you now have a mirror that shows you northbound traffic. The same could be done at Yopon Trail and South Dogwood, or you could reinstall the stop sign that used to be right there at Yopon and South Dogwood, heading south. That would be a calming device for the traffic as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Paula Sherlock?
I'm sorry, is it Paula Sherlock? Yes.
And I missed it, I didn't see the A on the N. My apologies. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Paula Sherlock, and I'm here with my husband, Ike Sherlock, and we own property at 66 Ocean Boulevard. And I just really wanted to give the council and citizens a little heads-up. After the last meeting, when we discussed the ocean replenishment nourishment project, my husband and I realized that there were very few, in fact, we might have been the only, I think, Anna, oceanfront property owners who were here. And the fact is that most oceanfront property owners are not residents, they don't live here year-round, they may not stay very connected to what's going on. So there is some interest among some of us in forming an oceanfront property owners association. I cannot tell you what form this will have or how it will be organized, but I did want to get ahead of this a little bit and make sure you understood it's, it's not pro or con anything, it's not anti anything the town council is doing, it's certainly not anti anything anybody else, any other segment of the community in Southern Shores. We're just looking for a way to communicate more effectively and consistently with oceanfront property owners, particularly as the beach nourishment project does or doesn't go forward. That's it.
Thank you, very much. Thank you very much.
May I say something to?
Sure.
Are you aware of the Facebook page that's been opened up for this subject?
A little, yes.
Okay, because there is a Facebook page where people can communicate and everything on this.
Right. I think there's some interest in expanding that.
Okay. Just if you're aware of it, that's all I wanted to, that's the only thing I wanted to make sure of.
Thanks.
Sally Gudis? Good evening, Sally.
Hi. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. First of all, I want to echo Tricia's thank yous. Thank you so much for all the help that the town offered during the Historic Flat Top Tour, to the police chief and to all the town employees that were so helpful to us throughout the planning process. I also want to especially thank those of you who did come that day, but also the Historic Landmark Commission for making a huge effort and presenting those of us that were on the tour, who are also designated Southern Shores Historic Landmarks, for taking the time to present to us our wonderful, and I would have brought mine, but it's a little heavy, bronze plaque that, for being historic landmark. And thank you so much for doing that. Thank you, Mayor Bennett, for being there. And also thank you, Peter, for arranging to have the tour, for a video to be made of this year's tour. So thank you so much. Really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I did also want to urge the council to adopt ZTA 1901 PB and say that is, we need this kind of protection and for the town council to speak loudly and clearly so that the staff is not put in the position of having to make decisions that, in the absence of this kind of direction, the community definitely is interested in the control of high occupancy cottages. And I urge the council to adopt this today and to continue to work to make all of our ordinances clear so that all of us are able to be ensured that Southern Shores will continue to be the lovely community, low-density community that we all love. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'll close the public comment since no one else has signed up. Council, under Old Business Item 4A, consideration of the second reading of ZTA 1901. Under Old Business, consideration of second reading of ZTA 1901 PB. The first reading passed on April 2nd, 2019 by a three to two majority. Do I have a motion to reconsider ZTA 1901 PB? Thanks, Gary. Have a motion? Need a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Fred. Any discussion, council?
I had a question for Ben.
Okay, that's good.
Um, what, just as a clarification, so if a homeowner who lives, let's say, out of town doesn't rent their home, but has a home in town that they keep for their family alone, is it subject to the same occupancy restriction?
The occupancy restriction?
Well, yes. And it's the 14 overnight occupants, right? I've been getting some, I've had some questions on this, and I wanted to clarify.
They are, if they are permitted as a vacation cottage under this use. So if they're currently doing that, then there'd be non-conforming, single-family dwelling permitted. But in the future, if they cross the boundaries of the non-conformity rules, they would have to bring it into compliance, which would mean that they would have to keep the occupancy.
Down to less than 14.
Because the occupancy limitation only applies if you are a vacation cottage use.
So in that situation, let's say, you know, we get a lot of folks who come to town for Thanksgiving, the holidays. If one of those vacation rental cottages owned, not rented, owned by a family and can have more than 14 people, are they allowed to do that? Are they allowed to have a Thanksgiving party for more than 14 people? Or is it complaint-based? Can the neighbors call and say?
Well, there are multiple different issues here. First of all, it's gotta be overnight occupancy.
Okay.
So they'd have to stay there overnight. And then somebody's gonna have to figure out that they're overnight. So it's gonna have to be complaint-driven and investigated.
Okay.
And it would apply whether or not they rent it, if they have, if they don't live in it, if it's a vacation cottage.
As long as they don't live there, if they have more than 14 people stay overnight, it would technically, however the enforcement would take place, it would technically be non-conforming.
Correct. Well, technically, it wouldn't be non-conforming.
But it'd be, it would be a violation.
Yeah, it would be a violation if they were permitted as a vacation cottage, not as a non-conforming, single-family dwelling.
But if they don't rent it, that would not affect?
It doesn't matter whether they rent it or not.
It doesn't matter.
Any other questions, council?
No, I'd just like to make a comment. I think the council should pass the ZTA. It may not be perfect, but we really don't have time to perfect it. We'll have to work details out later. This issue's been going back and forth to the planning board for a long, long time, and I think the public's kinda fed up with us. They want us to get on with it and, and do something to prevent the proliferation of large event-type houses in the town. So I strongly favor passing it.
Thank you, Fred. And I agree with you on that, on that comment. I think it's, we've struggled with this for a long time, and maybe it's still not perfect. We can always go back with amendment later if we have to.
Yeah.
Any other comments, council?
I mean, I guess, this is gonna sound strange. I probably, I may have never said it, but I actually agree with Ms. Scherzma's comment. And I would encourage Jim, as the two people who voted against it, to vote unanimously for it. I'm not convinced this is gonna really even solve the problem, but I do think it's important that us as a council, we speak as a single voice. Clearly, the majority of the council does believe in this and as indicated by the three to two vote. So, you know, I, I would, while imperfect, I think it's worth, like I said, us all being consistent on this one, at least for the final vote, and go from there.
Tom, I think, I think we've worked our planning board extremely hard on this issue. They gave us a 5-0 vote to pass this, and I think they strongly support it. And, you know, I don't just support because there's 5-0, but they've worked hard on bringing this. It's not perfect. Actually, nothing we do really is perfect, so, but their hard work has been shown, and, you know, we've supported it as a majority last month. And I think we need to go ahead and vote on it and put it in place.
Thank you, Gary. I agree with that, what you've said, and I also would like to acknowledge the fact that our town attorney has spent a number of hours on this as well. Moving along, council, all in favor of?
Can I say something on it?
Sure. I'm sorry, Jim.
My objections to this were stated at the last meeting, and I still have those same objections. But I hear what everybody is saying with the importance of a 5-0 vote. So with reservations, with extreme reservations, because I think this is gonna come back and bite us, bite us out of town, I will vote for it.
Thanks, Jim. So council, all in favor of passing ZTA 1901 PB, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion's made and carried to pass ZTA 1901 PB. At this time, I would like to make a motion that we reappoint Mr. Mike Stone as the town of Southern Shores representative to Dare County Land Transfer Tax Appeals Board. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Gary. Any discussion about this?
Does he wanna do it?
He's indicated very strongly to me he'd like to stay on that board. He said it's one of his favorite committees, and I didn't question that. So if, yeah, his, his comment to me was he'd like to be on the board. In fact, he, he approached us about, about continuing to serve. So all in favor of reappointing Mr. Stone to this, to this Dare County Land Transfer Appeals, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. So she'll reappoint Mr. Stone. The item B on your, under New Business, was the Mallard Cove Association request to have town assume ownership of the private street. Mallard Cove withdrew that request a few days ago for various reasons, and I'm not sure what they are, but they decided they didn't wanna come out of the town's umbrella right now. So that, that's been taken care of. Council consideration of appointing a citizen committee to explore possibility of a branch library requested by Councilman Connors. I'll let Councilman Connors address that. Thank you, Jim.
Most of this, most of the information that I have on this has been posted on the town website, so I'm not gonna reiterate everything that's already been out there for more than a month. But for the benefit of those in the audience who may not have read that, basically, this idea started from a telephone call that I got from a Kitty Hawk resident last year who was actually cleaning the library out at All Saints Church, and he got the idea and he relayed it to me. So it was an intriguing idea to me, and I pondered it for a few weeks. And then one day, I just on a lark pulled in and talked to the town manager up in Duck. He was intrigued also. So I carried that on and talked to the town manager here, Mr. Rasko, over at Kitty Hawk, the county manager eventually, as well as an elected council or commissioner at Dare County. But more importantly, I also talked to Jonathan Warwick at the, he's on the board of the East Augie Mall Regional Library System, and he was very helpful on the, on moving this forward. After talking with all those folks, I eventually decide, decided or tried to have a public meeting, which took place in mid-March. And again, the outline that I used for that meeting, as well as some of the synopsis of how that meeting went, is posted on the website. But suffice it, suffice it to say that it was a very lively discussion. People were enthused. They were, they were excited about this idea. So with all that said, that's where, that's led us to where we are right now. And what I'd like to ask the council is if we, as a council, can form a committee of Southern Shores residents to further explore this idea and how it might work. Not only am I asking the council to form a committee, but I'd like to ask the council, how do we form a committee? I mean, is it, I've already got four volunteers who would, who are just chomping at the bits to be on this committee, but it's just, it's a wide-open question. Can we form a committee to further research it? And if so, how do we wanna do it? With that said, I'll just sit back and try and answer any questions that may arise, or...
I would suggest, Jim, that you make a motion to the council direct formation of a committee to look into this library situation and whether we should pursue it. And if you are comfortable with it, I would let you recruit the volunteers that you know about already who wanna serve on that committee and come back to us with, with the membership. Is council, does that, does that happen for the rest of you? You feel comfortable with that?
I mean, maybe the, maybe the way to handle that would, I would support that motion, but maybe have you work with our town manager. So between the two of you, come up with a slate of folks, because there may be other people that are not on your list that, that can get their information to Peter and who might wanna volunteer, so.
Okay.
So get, get those four names into them, let Peter gather them, and then come back with that. Do we, and I guess the only question, well, let's make the motion first.
I have a question. Sure. I mean, it really, it's not a question, it's probably a clarification. You said you've talked with Kitty Hawk, Duck, and? Mr. Rasko. Rasko. And in your material, you know, you talked about Martin's Point and like that, would you want your committee to include, I mean, you're talking about a regional or a, yeah, I guess a regional branch for us, Duck, Kitty Hawk, is that, am I, am I interpreting that right? I think you said it right, but it would primarily be intended to serve the residents of Duck, Southern Shores, Kitty Hawk, Mallard Cove. And Jonathan Warwick suggested to me, keep them out of this conversation right now, but also lower Currituck. And the reason he suggested that is because it really starts complicating things from funding and all. But our library system within the county is a regional system because, you know, they borrow through Currituck and Lisbon, I mean, they go Camden. Yes. The whole thing. So, you know, it's not just Dare County Public Libraries, the regional library. Right, but Dare County is the one who funds it here, the ones we have in our county. Right. I understand that, 'cause I use this one, Kill Devil Hills. So would you wanna involve, I guess my question is, if we're gonna do something like that, wouldn't we want to involve Kitty Hawk and Duck, which are adjacent towns, and see if they wanna be a part of this? Well, I'm wide open to that idea, but what I have initially thought is if Southern Shores could take the lead on this, let us form our committee, and then once, you know, if they say yes, let's pursue this. At that point, then we could start talking more officially to the sister communities. My gut feeling, and that's all it is, is a gut feeling, is that it may be premature to start involving the other communities now. If we decide here, within our community, that yes, this is worth pursuing, then we can approach, you know, we can do a resolution and try and talk to their, the sister towns to do a resolution, and then we would approach Dare County and, but I don't know, that's...
I got a comment. Sounds to me like you've got support in Southern Shores. I think it's time to go and talk to the other towns, and if you're gonna form this committee, make it like a little regional committee and have reps from Southern Shores, Duck, Kitty Hawk, Martin's Point, whoever else. I mean, if you wanna move it along, I think it would be more expeditious to do that.
It might make it more, we might have a better shot at getting some funding from the county.
Get more support. Well, that's why I'm asking here. I'm not, you know, okay, yeah.
Let me ask you another question. What's the cost gonna be to Southern Shores?
Well, Jonathan Warwick, the library board member, said that it's funded by Dare County. And that was affirmed by, with discussions with Dare County. So that's it. Now, if we went, well, one thing that Jonathan Warwick told me is, is that a request like this would be more favorable if we could, you know, if we made in-kind contributions. He brought up the example of, for example, donating land or using land. But I don't see that option happening. I think this is gonna be better served by renting space at the marketplace or someplace like that, rather than trying to build a brand-new freestanding building with all the associated costs and everything. So, I mean, your idea, Fred, great, okay, that's all I need to hear. So I'll, I'll try and talk to somebody over in the sister communities, including, now Mallard Cove is one group that I'd never approached, but I'll contact them.
Martin's Point.
You mean Martin's Point?
Martin's Point.
Yes. I meant Martin's Point.
But they're part of Dare County.
But they're part of Dare County.
Yes, they are.
They're not, they're just, that's like a homeowners' association, more or less.
But they are a significant demographic up here that would benefit from it. So I think your idea, you know, including them is spot on.
So what else do we need, council?
Why don't, Jim, why don't you make a motion?
To form you a committee.
Yes.
With council approval. I'd like to make a motion that I be authorized to form a committee or present two council names recommended to sit on a committee at the next council meeting for the purpose of further exploring the branch library idea in Southern Shores.
I'll second that.
Well, let me ask you, will that committee consist of reps from other towns, or is it just Southern Shores?
Yes, no, I mean...
Just Southern Shores.
Yes, I will, I will approach the other communities nearby and see if they want to engage.
Sounds good.
Participate.
That's, participation's going to be, going to be up to what they want to do. You can't, you can't require somebody to come from Martin's Point, but you can ask. I'm good with that. All in favor?
Well, let me add one more person you might want to talk to, and that'd be Dare County Schools. Because, I mean, I know they're, well, I don't know anymore, but the summer, we used to have a summer reading program, and the library was open in the summer for kids. So they may be interested, they may be interested in being a part of it as well and having that service.
They definitely were. There were a couple of teachers in the public hearing that I, that I conducted. And they had some very good insights. So with what you just said, I will approach the schools and see if I can find somebody over there that would be willing to sit on a committee.
Well, Ellen Bryson is their media specialist at Kitty Hawk, and she is really an outstanding educator, but...
Bryson? Okay, she may be one that's already volunteered, but I'll, I'll bird dog that.
I'm just saying, to get a foothold, you know, we might look at supporting their summer program to get it started, to make it look like we're going into a, you know, give you, give us a good background, so to speak. Just thinking.
I'll talk to them over there then, and I'll try and get her, talk to her.
Vote, Tom. Did we vote?
No, I asked for a vote, we didn't get it. I hadn't forgotten that, Gary, almost.
All in favor of supporting Jim's idea of establishing a committee to, to make sure this library idea has wings or legs, indicate by saying aye? Aye?
Aye.
Jim, you've got it.
All right.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. The next item of business is recommendation for council to consider authorizing removal of a tree on town-owned street right away at the corner of Yopon Trail and South Dogwood Trail for public safety purposes. It was previously shown as not to be removed, and capital sheet improvement plans authorized by council for implementation in the fiscal year 1920 Capital Improvement Plan on July the 10th. I requested that we look into this or discuss this because we received a petition from a number of the property owners on Yopon to remove the tree because of line of sight considerations. A couple of them, one of them spoke specifically about a couple of near misses by not being able to see a car coming from the south. I can't, I wasn't there, I can't speak to that, but we had a number of people sign the petition. I, I'd like to take this issue back to the CIP committee, CIIP committee, and have them look at it again because it came, the whole Yopon Trail improvements came from that committee and the recommendation to do it. The, one of the issues that wasn't talked about here by the residents, which I heard second, third-hand, but have heard now firsthand, when we realigned the street and reconfigured it and moved to the north of the tree, we narrowed the entryway. And the big issue now is, well, okay, I can see pretty good if I take my time and am cautious, but I still, I still can't pass a car that wants to come in. So that's why let's go back to the CIP and talk to our engineer about this and see if it's spot, what we can do to rectify that. And it may or may not include recommendation to remove the tree. Maybe we'll wrap the tree like we did last time, have a two-prong entrance, I don't know. But I think we should, I'd make a, I'd make a motion that we, that we address it that way and have the CIIP committee look at it with our engineer and see what we need to correct, correct the problem. I'm not, I've had mixed reports about the condition of the tree. It's definitely got some core rot, trapped some water inside the tree. I had some dead branches which were removed, but both our arborist and our tree service have indicated that the tree could live indefinitely. So it's a, it's a kind of a question to see if we can resolve the problem without removing a tree. So I'd make a motion and we do that, council.
I'll second the motion.
Any other, any other discussion about that?
Yeah, I've got a comment or two. I think your idea of sending it back to the committee is a good idea because we did change the configuration of that street. We created a problem for the residents by taking that other entrance or exit, the right turn, going south. I think the town should put it back the way it was, and the tree's not an issue. But in addition to that, I've been over there looking at it, and you've got visibility if you're patient and you look both ways. And if we cut that tree down, we're setting a really, a bad precedent for the rest of the, of the town because everybody that's got a tree in their view is going to want you to cut it down. And that's not good. That's going to ruin the ambiance of, in this case, South Dogwood Trail and other streets in the town. I know personally, I've got trees obstructing my view in my driveway. And I'm patient, and I don't pull out until I'm sure there are no cars coming. And so I don't, I just don't think it's a good idea to cut that tree down, as long as it's healthy. Now, if it's diseased and about to fall down, a different story.
So I'll, go ahead.
I've pulled on that street where, I've been on that street and exited it on a bicycle, on a Toyota Camry, and in a Toyota Tundra pulling a trailer. I have not had a problem. If I stop at the stop line, I can see a good hundred yards to the south, and ironically, only about 20 yards to the north. That's where the obstruction is. But if I then pass the stop bar and pull up to the edge of the pavement, then I can see all the way to the Three Dog, I'm sorry, the north-southeast intersection of the Dogwoods. So for the reasons stated, I'm not buying. But again, let's take this back to the CIIP committee and see how we can solve this problem without taking the tree down.
Thank you, Jim.
I agree. I'm sorry, I agree.
Okay, all in favor?
I wrote it yesterday, and visibility's good, north and south.
I don't have any trouble with the visibility there.
And even when you stop back, you can see behind the tree at the stop bar.
I think if we can give the residents of that street that have a waste of concern our assurance that we're going to look at some other options, it might, it might calm the feathers a little bit.
Put the other drive in.
That's an option, no question. We have enough, enough right of way there to do that. The problem with the other drive was, as you can imagine, people come from the south, we're not always going to the, to the north side of the tree. They were cutting across into that outbound lane. And luckily, there's not that much traffic, so it didn't create a problem. But that's what, that was happening. Let's have a vote on that, so we make sure we get it voted for. All in favor of motion to send this back to the CIIP committee, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion is made and carried. Our second general public comment. Paul Borzalino?
No comments, thank you.
Oh, thank you, Paul. Ann Schurzma? Good evening, Ann. We're going to put a limit on you three times a day, evening.
I'm watching the clock, though. Good evening, once again, Ann Schurzma, 69 Hickory Trail. I'm going to be brief. Thank you so much for your unanimous endorsement of the ZTA 1901 PB. I agree with some of you who said it's not perfect, that's true, but it's a good starting point, and I think it's going to have a major effect to ensure that this town remains a low-density town, low-density environment. Along those lines, Mr. McDonald brought up last November, when we had the special meeting about the large home, some other issues that you might want to look at and that you might want to direct the planning board to look at. And one of them was parking. And I think that now that you have decided to put the limit on overnight occupants and to limit deceptive capacity, especially in vacation cottages, that you really should look at the parking requirements that the town imposes. I did not look at the ordinance before coming here. Mr. Gallup probably can inform you about that if you had any questions at this stage. But I do know that the two structures that are being built at 98 and 134 Ocean Boulevard have 17 parking spaces with them because the town requires them to have those 17 spaces. So it's the town that's sort of adding to the congestion and to the lack of, or the density problem. I would just ask that you look at the parking requirements. Mr. McDonald also had a suggestion about looking at how living space is defined, but that's not really related so much to what we were discussing tonight with the ZTA. That's all I have to say. I would appreciate another look at the parking requirements. It may be a cap on the number of parking spaces per vacation cottage now that you now have an occupancy limit. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Tommy Carroll?
Tommy Carroll, 77 East Dogwood Trail, Kitty Hawk. Thank you for the ZTA vote. Thank you for the, the tree vote so far. I appreciate that. When the task force for the Bicycle Pass was, was, was chosen, I was upset that I wasn't picked to be on the task force. And I think during that time, the reason I thought I wasn't picked is it might have been, there was a real division in that, in the town at that point about the trees, keep the trees, save our trees, people who, who didn't care. And I had lived on the road, I think, about 18 years. And there were people chosen ahead of me to be on that committee that had lived on the road for six months. I thought I got shafted. I thought I was qualified. I'd done a lot of homework on it. What I'm going to ask the committee to do now, the commissioners, at least, at least consider, I'm going to rob some of Jim's wording here. I'm going to ask commission to form a committee to study ways to stop the cut-through traffic in Southern Shores. I don't think it'll hurt anything. I know we beat that to death a little bit. But I know in different parts of the country now, this same issue is going on, okay? I've lived on the road for 18 years. I see what the traffic is doing. I see, I see the speed. I see, someone's going to get hurt on that road, and I hope not, but it's going to be on our watch and more on your guys' watch because we can do something to stop it, and maybe we can't. I'm not asking to pick all the people on the committee. All I want to do is be a part of the committee. I want to open it up, see who's, who's best to be on the committee, who's qualified to be committee, who wants to be on the committee. But I would like to head that, I don't even need to head the committee, I want to be on the committee. So I'd like the council to at least to consider starting a committee. I hesitate to call it a task force. That seems, it seems labor, same thing. But that's what I'm asking. So I'd like it, not to answer it tonight, discuss it tonight, but I would like that opportunity to do that, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have public comment they'd like to say a word or two? We've got, we've got a few minutes, we've only been here an hour, gosh. We're going to set a record. Andy, you'd like to say a word? Sure. We're going to hold you to one minute, though.
I wasn't even planning on saying anything, but I really appreciate all five of you jumping in there and voting for 1901 PB. It sends a good signal. And I know watching Ben at last Friday's marathon session here in this same building, that he's capable of taking anybody that wants to challenge us. So anyway, I just, I want to say thanks a lot for that. But I also want to just kind of speak to what we need to do, maybe as a town, and that would be to look at, we've looked at what the, the large house issue is, but we confuse it with large occupancy issues. And I think if we can, and I'm speaking for myself, not for other members of the planning board, but I think if we can, as a planning board, bring the event facility back up and maybe tighten it up from what it is right now, we can kind of get this thing simmered back down to, you know, our angst with, you know, these events and these, these, these houses that have, you know, large facilities for, you know, games and fun and stuff, but also could have the potential to be a huge event facility. Mr. Gallup wrote a very restrictive event facility about three years ago, and it got watered down considerably. And I really think, I'm going to push forward at the planning board level, but I think we need to reexamine the event side of how to control large occupancy, not so much large houses. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Anything else, council?
Are you on comments?
I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to say a couple of words, and I'll turn it over to the rest of you guys. Busy time. This morning, the town manager and I attended the meeting of the Dare County Commissioners in Manio. It was a good meeting. They had their normal, their normal commissioners' meeting, which lasted longer than we stayed. But it was good to go because Dare County received an award by the American Shore and Beach Preservation Association for their efforts in our last beach nourishment project. This is a national award, I guess as high as you can go with this, something like what they did. And they got the award because they, we were able to pull four communities together to accomplish a project. And in doing that, the estimate that they, was they saved about $10 million. So not only was the, was the venture itself successful, as far as the, as the way they measure those things, but also the cost savings were significant. And they received that recognition. We went to that meeting this morning, and we, we presented this plaque, but we also had a chance to hear why, why the plaque was awarded. It was pretty worth, it was very worthwhile. I'm going back to Dare County tomorrow, to the Dare County Offices Administration Building to, with a mayor, with a panel of mayors from all of our towns to talk about the offshore drilling, the position to it. And they've come up with a new, a new resolution, which we're going to be considering and talking about tomorrow. Each one of the mayors will be called upon to spend a couple of minutes, given their, their view of the potential impact of offshore drilling, and then looking what the benefits might be, if there are any, to the state of North Carolina. I don't know where they are. But we're going to be in that meeting probably from 1:00 until 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning afternoon. Just wanted you to know what we're doing there with that. Just wanted you to know what we're doing there with that. Last, at the last meeting, I had asked our, our council members to provide to me their observations and their suggestions as far as a long-range planning agenda. In other words, have things they would like to see us conclude longer term, three, five, 10 years out. I'm, I'm thinking one to three to five years are better for us to talk about, because we don't know what's going to happen much fast tomorrow, but it'd be good to have something we can kind of, kind of put our teeth into and look at and say, yes, these, these things are worthwhile. And I've gotten back now feedback from all five of them. I haven't had a chance to compile it or to work on it at all, but I will do that and hopefully come back to you and to them by the, by our meeting in June. That's all I have. Thank you. Chris?
Look, I'm.
Gary?
Yes. I'd like for the council to direct Wes. Andy and Ann both have been working on this for a couple of months now, but they both jumped on the bandwagon of this, and I'd like to have Wes bring back to the council the motion on an ordinance amendment that we had about special events, December of 2015, that would allow the town to manage and require permitting of certain events, was what it was, and bring it back to our June 4th meeting for our consideration. Looking at what we do or what we have on books as far as events, it's very limited. And Ben and Wes put a lot of time into that motion, and it kind of got pushed to the wayside because we were dealing with square footage and septic and everything else. But when I reread it and looked at it, it, it has a lot of good potential. It gives us the opportunity to regulate and cause people who are having special events, requires them to have, to get a permit and puts restrictions on them. So, I think we need to look at that. I'd ask the council to bring it, have Wes, direct Wes to bring it back for our consideration at our next meeting on June 4th.
What are you asking them to bring back? A proposed?
It's, it's a.
Or just a report, or?
No, it's an ordinance, you wouldn't have to do a thing to it, except tweak it a little bit. That was brought to us, and it just kind of got tabled.
Are you asking them to tweak it?
No, I'm asking them just to bring it to us for our review and reconsideration.
We, we'll go ahead and agendaize that, if that's what your request is, we'll just put it on the agenda.
Yeah.
Maybe we don't even need to vote on it?
No, we, if you, if you request it, we, we agree it was, this would be, Peter, you got that, right?
Yes, it'll be on the, with market for the June 4th agenda.
Thank you.
I agree, it's weak.
Anything else, Gary?
No.
Fred?
I want to respond to some comments that Tommy Carroll made about cut-through traffic. Cut-through traffic is probably the number-one issue that most citizens complain to me about. Wondering why doesn't the town do something? It's becoming a worse problem every year, and I think Tommy had some good ideas, and I would like for us to have an agenda item next regular meeting and maybe ask Tommy to present some of his ideas and us to consider his idea of forming a committee to, of citizens to discuss this and, and to research it even more. Like he said, there are a lot of other towns that have this problem. It'd be good for this committee to, and this is just an example of what they could do, research what they're doing, and maybe there's some new ideas out there that we haven't considered, and I, I think he's got an excellent idea, and I think it ought to be agenda item next, next meeting, and allow him to come forward and present some of his ideas, if he's agreeable.
So, you're looking at a potential formation of a committee to do this, to be considered by council?
If that's, if that makes sense, I'd like to hear more of what Tommy's got to say. I mean, we limit our citizens to three minutes, and it's just no way to really articulate, you know, everything that they're thinking, and I'd like to give him that opportunity, if he's willing to do it. If he's not, then maybe we figure out something else.
I don't have many ideas now, Chuck, but I'd like to get the committee, get the ideas. I'd have some ideas, but I think that would be the committee, I'd really get other input from people who volunteer, or that you guys can suggest or recommend beyond the committee, and it would be the basis, so I don't actually have a report, but I, I certainly have ideas, but I would like that report to be part of the committee's findings after X amount of time.
Thank you, Fred.
Mr. Mayor, without objection, then we can agendaize Councilman Newberry's request to, for the council to form a exploratory committee, as, as he described, and have that on the June 4th agenda, and then you can have whatever discussion you want to have.
Okay, I'll tell you what, I'll sponsor that agenda item, and I'll, I'll do a little research on my own, I'll talk to Tommy and try to come up with some ideas to present as far as forming a committee to, to explore it further.
You, you, I'm sorry?
We have that as an agenda item.
Thank you, Peter. You, you should know, people in the audience should know, we, we've, this has been discussed, the no-left-turn idea, which we, which we tried, experimented with, it, it moved the traffic significantly away from South Dogwood over to Sea Oats and Wax Myrtle, in big, pretty big numbers, according to the residents of those streets. We've discussed closing a bridge, closing two bridges completely. We've discussed toll booths, we've discussed, and we've have given, we've given these discussions, and we've actually looked into the cost of doing this. So, this is, this is not something we've been just sitting back and doing nothing. We have really looked at a lot of options, and unfortunately, haven't been able to come up with an option that we felt was workable and feasible and could be accepted by the public and people that live here and use the streets somewhere in winter. But I have no problem with looking at it another time and getting some new thoughts about it, if we can definitely do that. Jim?
I don't really have anything to say, except I did want to make a comment about the recently passed ZTA that we passed tonight. I'm not advocating this right now, but I sincerely hope that at some point, we can start as a community to, to start looking at the impacts of these large homes and vacation rentals. The impacts specifically parking, trash, buffer screening, there are another, there are a few other things that by state law we can address that we need, in my opinion, to start paying attention to. We have closed the door, as other people have called it, on the large homes, you know, in, in many respects tonight, but there is more that we can do, and if we focus on the impacts, we can strengthen this a lot more. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Jim. Anybody else have anything? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'd make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Second.
Aye. I second it, Gary. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, folks.